... many blessings of life, thank you for our sake. Give us wisdom as we can operate tonight on the issues that are religion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
This brings us to the point of the agenda for oral participation from the public on any item that is not on the agenda. If an item is on the agenda, please wait until the appropriate time. Is there anyone that has a non-agendaized item that they would like to bring to our attention? Mr. Wiley.
First, let me thank you for washing my car tonight. Asked me to come out in the rain, got it washed off. Appreciate that. There was a statement made last meeting that I was making comments on behalf of Mr. Zibrik. Those were my personal comments, and they were not asked for or solicited by him at all. When I stand up here, I stand on my own two feet. I don't come up here being begged to speak, and I want that understood. And I might say things on their behalf, but those are my opinions. There were some statements made in the paper that I was reading. One was the City News, and then I think one was in the Sun or the Facts. And, Ovi, you made a comment that Mr. Zibrik did not go along with your red light cameras. If you go back and look at it, he asked that it be studied in December. He said he's not working with you, he's against the public and their wishes. Now, I don't know how many people out there in this community do and do not want red light cameras, but I will bet you that the numbers don't support it. So I'm just suggesting, if, again, can we please throw this knife thrown back and forth away? This council, in the past, sure, they don't all agree on situations that happen here. One side may want one thing, another may want something else, but they have never gotten into this argument that we've had for the last three to four months, from one side to the other. And it's going beyond that, it goes to the paper. People see this in community, and I don't want this town to be divided. I don't want them to get to the point where they get turned off on city council. We would like to have people come to the city council meetings. And, please, let's put this down. If you don't agree with what he has to say, you don't have to bring up things that don't relate to this, that are on the outside, such as, oh, well, you were with the medical center. That doesn't have anything to do with this. It's just another little screw that you can put into them. So, please, make this place look nice in this town, because this may be seen by people that may not live here and people that do live here. And I think it'd be nice if everybody was to come in and do the Christian thing and say, hey, we're friends here. I don't get that feeling when I walk out of here, and I don't get it when I read the newspaper about some of the articles. So, please, thank you.
Any other oral reports on non-agenda items? Seeing none, conflict of interest, everyone can declare that if so needed on the particular item. Item number two is a certificate that is related to the city's participation in the demand response program, and I believe we have a representative from Southern California, Edison, and we're always excited to get awards.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. As the representative to the city from Southern California Edison, it's my great pleasure to be before you again this evening and to present to you a plaque and a letter from Lisa Cagliani, who is the Vice President for Southern California Edison's Business Community Division. Lisa is recommending that you be awarded this because of your great participation with energy efficiency with Southern California Edison. The city of Loma Linda in this last reporting period has saved over 1 megawatt of electricity power. Also, Southern California Edison had recommended the city of Loma Linda to be highlighted in our newsletter, which is included in this. It's a very nice article, and it allows other cities to see how they can attain such greatness. You have all done a wonderful job, and we're very happy to partner with you, and I'll present this to you, Mr. Mayor.
Probably a little hard for the camera to see, but I'll just briefly describe. There's the letter, as was mentioned, and then a picture with the photovoltaic systems. And, you know, it is amazing, when you see the pictures, it does cover, you know, all the carport roofs, a good portion of Civic Center, a fire station, and senior citizens' center roofs with the system, and it has been a very, I think, worthwhile project for the city, and many, many people deserve credit and so forth. And obviously, it's not just the council, but we appreciate the recognition, and hopefully will inspire others, as you mentioned, to think about similar projects. So, thank you very much. The next item is one of those items that, again, gives you some pride, some sadness, some joy, some despair. I think it kind of touches almost all the emotions that are out there, but it relates to a little boy that was treated in Loma Linda University Children's Hospital, and unfortunately did suffer from a terminal illness. But we have received a letter that I will read just parts of, and then there is a short video presentation related to the story that will follow after a brief mention from the letter. So, again, letter from Loma Linda University Children's Hospital, and, Dear Mayor Brower, takes special person who goes unselfishly from the heart so their child can experience joy and hope. On December 16, that happened, Tristan is now six years old, battled leukemia for the last three years, in and out of the hospital, and in July 2009, his family received the devastating news that his cancer had returned. And during the stay, Tristan wished he could play and just be a kid. Unfortunately, the cancer took that away from him. December arrived, and Tristan had been at Children's Hospital for a couple of months. Tristan's parents searched for a way to help their sons experience some holiday joy. One wish Tristan had always held close was to play in the snow with real sledding dogs. Tristan's family reached out to Children's Hospital to see if we could make his dream come true, and in turn, we reached out to you. Because of your, and again, that's talking about cities' compassion, generosity, Tristan was able to experience his wish. It was a remarkable afternoon, and we are so honored that you chose to be part of his special day. Loma Linda University Children's Hospital is tremendously grateful for the support of individuals like you in our community, again, whole community and council. Please accept our sincerest appreciation for the contribution and for caring enough to make the difference in the life of a child. So, if we have that video queued up, just let that roll. Yes, I'm sorry if I omitted that, but as you can recognize, Huldau-Crooks Park, I think, and snow, real snow brought down from the mountains. Even more despair after tonight, probably. So, you know, it's something that I think all of us that live in Loma Linda are proud to be citizens of a community that make it such a priority to try and meet some of the health needs and emotional needs of those with very serious illnesses. And, you know, again, we may not be the richest community or the most historic number of buildings compared to other communities, but I don't think any community can beat the spirit of compassion that we see evidenced in this video, and it's very inspiring for all of us and sad at the same time, but inspirational nonetheless, and wish the family the best in these difficult times. Consent calendar, just highlight, not too much longer here, but part of our consent calendar, June 8, general election. So, take notice, anyone that has interest in such activities. I'm ready for any action on the consent calendar.
I'm second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the consent calendar? Hearing none, any opposed to approving the consent calendar? It carries unanimously and is approved. Old business, we have one item, and this relates to a discussion and direction relating to options for consideration pertaining to the red light camera agreement with Redflex. As was listed in the agenda and commented on, this was part of the closed session activity with some of the potential litigation aspects that may or may not be involved with various decisions that we may take this evening. So, city attorneys provided us a brief overview of that. We may have some further questions that we will have of him. Obviously, he can't get into detailed discussions, but we'll leave that part for the moment. So, we've discussed this issue at many a session. At our last meeting, there was some discussion on which direction to go, and we tried to make certain that everything was agendaized tonight, that would allow everything from terminating the contract to extending the contract, to amending the contract, to allowing it to terminate at the end of its current life, which would be the end of November this year. So, with a very brief background of at least how we've gotten with that part of the agenda, I believe we have a staff report from our city manager related to this, and then I'm sure we'll have possibly a word or two of discussion after that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like you mentioned at the last city council meeting, the city council did ask me to look at that four option that you just mentioned, and we did have a meeting with the Redflex and discussed those items that you mentioned earlier. The first one is to early termination of the contract, and, again, like I mentioned at the last meeting, is right now in the contract, we don't have the early termination. So, to be able to terminate, we pretty much have to buy out the remaining contract, which is approximately 11 months. And we met with Redflex, and they gave me the number of to buy out. We had to pay them $534,558.83. What this is, is really is the amount that we paid them, about $42,000 a month for the next 11 months, plus the deficit that the city is supposed to pay them anytime we don't have the enough fine, equal to $42,000. That is the total amount. The option number two is to honor the contract, the existing contract, and let the contract expire at the end of the year. This will be at no cost to the city, and the money owed in deficit to Redflex will expire at the end of the contract. That means we don't owe them anything at the end of the contract. The third option is to ask them if we can extend the contract for additional two years and to see if we can have any saving with the additional two years. The response is, if you want to extend two years, it had to be under current terms, so it's going to be the same $42,000 a month. But for, if you want to reduce the monthly payment, they recommend that we go to five years extension, and then they're willing to renegotiate the contract. So, after I had a meeting with them and talked to the city attorney, my recommendation is for us to continue the contract with Redflex and let it expire at the end of the current term, which is in December of 2010. That's in my report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Questions related to the city manager's report? Councilman Zibrik?
I'd like to ask a question of city attorney. Essentially, if the staff recommendation was followed, would it mean no action would be taken?
That's correct. Staff has worked with Redflex pursuant to your direction to try to have them take a look at some of the concerns that have been expressed by the public. We've met with the Sheriff's Department as well, and as Jarv indicated, there is some positive news that has resulted from that. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like me to go through that, I'd be happy to. Anything you think's appropriate? That sounds great. I did distribute to the council some little talking points because I had a concern that I might not be able to get here tonight, and I have no objection if those are made public. But just to summarize that, pursuant to the direction of the council, we did meet with Redflex, with the Sheriff's Department. The contract provides that the city has some input with Redflex to the violation criteria that the Sheriff's Department applies to a particular potential violation, but ultimately, the Sheriff's Department has the sole discretion as to whether or not to issue a citation, and we need to respect that discretion that the law enforcement officer has. As a result of these discussions, though, the Sheriff's Department is exercising that discretion as to whether or not to issue a citation, and they're looking at some of the safety issues, whether or not a particular situation arises to a significant safety violation. And right turn situations, the notorious California stop, are some of those situations that they're looking at. We don't have the authority to simply say we're not going to enforce right-hand violations. That's part of the vehicle code that the city is bound by, just as any other city is bound by that. To give you some numbers for the public's information, in 2009, approximately, oops, I'm sorry, let's get back. In 2009, of all the citations actually issued, that amounted to about 36% of the potential violations. In other words, 64% of incidents where the camera system was triggered did not result in an actual citation being issued to the driver or the registered owner. And that included 517 cases that were designated in the reports as safe turn on red. Now, as a result of some of the meetings that we've had over the last few months, we have some new numbers in January. In January, there were 451 potential violations, which resulted in only 157 citations, so that's about 35% of those potential violations. 294 potential violations were not cited based upon the officer's discretion or some other factor, and that amounts to 65%. 130 potential violations were not cited based upon a finding of safe turn on red, and that is 29% of all the potential violations. So, staff will continue to work with Redflex and the Sheriff's Department to monitor the effectiveness of the program and to address any ongoing public concerns, to look at the safety issues, and so forth. As indicated, the contract will expire in the end of November, early December of this year, and council doesn't have to take any action for that to occur. If the council desires to extend the contract, that would take a specific action. If the council wants to renegotiate, we can certainly do that. We don't have to do that now. We can do that towards the end of the contract, when we have a little more bargaining power to renew the contract on terms that the council may feel are more favorable. But that's a decision for the council to review at any time in the future before the expiration of the contract, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions. Any? Councilman Peterson?
I'd like to make a comment, and that is, now, was that in the month of January that there was 451 violations, or 451 incidents, or what is the word?
Potential.
Potential, yeah. As I recall, the first couple of months that these cameras were in, that number was in at least the 2,000 or 3,000s. It was in, it were several thousand a month, potential. So, of the 451, only 30% are some of those, I think there were actual tickets that were issued, but the reduction from several thousand to 451 potential incidents a month is a huge, massive reduction in even potential violations at the lights, which is, I think, highly significant and probably a very strong indication, at least from my part, I would say, of increased safety at the intersections. Now, having listened to those terms, I still very, very strongly feel that another issue needs to be addressed here. I'm not quite sure how to go about it, but a $450 ticket for a right-hand turn is just ludicrous. That's crazy. It's just totally out of reason. It makes no sense whatsoever. The whole purpose of a camera, or a policeman, or anybody else on the corner is to get compliance. That's the purpose. Compliance to the law. That's the purpose. And charging somebody $450 is not getting compliance. That's just, that's stupidity. And so, there has to be a change made someplace way on up the line. Whoever comes across, whoever generates these crazy fines to begin with for a right-hand turn, something needs to be changed on the state level, because that's, that's, that's just, it doesn't make any, it doesn't make any common sense at all.
Well, that's certainly an issue. The city doesn't have any jurisdiction over the amount of those fines, as you know, so we live with that. But as far as the right-hand turns, again, the reality currently now is that with the Sheriff's Department taking a careful look at these situations, those where tickets are being issued now would presumably be the far more serious violations that actually endanger the public, either pedestrians or cross-traffic, and under our system, those more flagrant violations will continue to be enforced, even if some discretion is given on the more borderline cases. Mayor Proton?
I just wanted to comment on some of Councilman Peterson's statements about safety. If those of you in the public will recall, we lengthened the yellow light durations by one second, about somewhere around the 1st of November. And since that time, the left turn violations, the people continuing through a left turn signal after it turns red, have dropped by about 80 to 85% from about 240 a month to about 25 or 30 a month. So, lengthening yellow lights has produced a tremendous decrease in the number of violations. As far as straight-ahead violations go, we don't have the statistics because they weren't broken out in the past. All the straight-ahead violations and the right-turn violations were lumped together in the statistics, so we don't know how much the decrease was from the yellow lights, but the statistics from January are very telling. If you think about accidents waiting to happen at these intersections, the most egregious violation is when someone plows through a straight at speed and potentially, you know, T-bones your car in the opposite direction. The straight-ahead violations in January were, for the entire month, for four intersections, seven approaches, five violations total. That is tremendous improvement in safety from what we were seeing in the past. I don't know whether that dropped 95% from what it used to be or whatever, but there's only five left. So, you know, we're talking about huge success of lengthening the yellow lights. And my editorial comment, given my bent, is that we could have had that safety with lengthening of yellow lights four years ago instead of installing red light cameras.
Any other comments, questions at the moment? This is not a public hearing, but obviously, there's interest in this, and I have some slips, so would definitely invite three-minute comments by anyone that has an interest. And again, first one I have is Mr. Wiley on this item, and would like to invite him to share his perspectives on this particular item.
Thank you again, Mayor, Council. Dusty, thank you for getting those numbers. I'm impressed. I don't know what, you know, we've done, you know, Jarv's the one that put them in there.
It's our Lieutenant Jemson put those together.
No, but I mean, in other words, with the lengthening of the yellow, that hopefully will solve some problems. I'd like to see it get down below that by far. But did the sheriffs ever come back? And I know you'd asked for comments from staff when they did their presentation the first time around. Did those ever come back as to, for you to review or to go over? I know that was a couple of months ago.
Which comments?
The ones when they gave the traffic reports and showed you some of the video, and that was, I think it was December, something like that, it was about two or three months ago. So I know the gentleman was here our last meeting, I think, to answer questions, and I didn't know if those, ones that you presented at that time, whether they'd come back to the council for a review or whatever, or whether maybe just got forgotten about, dismissed. I don't know. Because there were some, I think, interesting comments that could have come out of that. And the other thing I was wondering, have we studied, how many have run through red lights? Is that just the seven that you were referring to, straight-through red lights?
Those were, per the statistics presented to us, five straight-through. That's not the right turns, it's not the left turns.
Well, but I mean, they, they did totally violate the red light going through.
Yeah, I don't know whether they were, you know, half a second clips of the red, or if they were stale violations that were five seconds red and, and more dangerous. I don't know.
Because I would think, if you have the opportunity to do it, it would be interesting to say, how many are serious, I mean, going over the speed limit and then some, or whether we're just trying to get through the intersection. Because this, I would think, when it comes to accidents, would be something that you want to put some thought into on how much of this you can prevent. So I appreciate that. And, and like I mentioned before, I think if we have those cameras, we can use them for study time, you know, before we get rid of them and forget them off the circuit anyway. I tried to keep things brief last time, that was why I cut a lot of these things short. You've answered most of the questions that I've had. The other one that I would be very cautious of, if you do away with some of these tickets, you come back and say, well, later on, I got a ticket, except I got pulled over, and I got a ticket for it. Now you're going to release that? This is what I would hate to see start to happen, because, again, like Councilman Peterson said, it is to try to enforce a law that is there and get people to abide by the laws. I had a guy the other day, it was two days ago, going in on Barton, sitting there, and you could see the car start to weave, look over, and he's sitting there texting as he's going down the road. Well, if you watch some of these programs where they show you what happens when you're normally driving and paying attention, and when you start to talk on the cell phone, and the time-lapse differences, and then when you start to text, a lot of these things will maybe come up, you get an accident, maybe the camera will show them. They were on the phone. And, you know, there, people getting worried about this thing, type of thing now, because people are looking at, I want to do it? And I can tell you, four to five or more times, just for me to go from my house to the mission up there, I can see people on their phones. And this is a potential way of getting people to think, because I don't know how you get around getting people back into complying with laws. So I appreciate all of your help on that, and to the Sheriff's Department for getting numbers to us, because if you save a life, that's the most important thing. If we lose one, it could have been prevented, that's a hard thing to come back to. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have a slip from Mr. Swiger.
I guess it's not a surprise what my position is on this subject. You know I'm vehemently against this. I think it's, it's terrible. I mean, it, it doesn't take a real rocket science to look at the intersections and watch people run these red lights. I mean, why would we early terminate a contract if it's going to cost us that kind of money? You would think that the city, at this point in time, would look back at the past litigations that we've gotten into and lost our tail on. We'd kind of try and stay away from that kind of situation going forward. Right-hand turn violations are against the vehicle code. I just find it hard to believe that we could stand up here and say, oh, it's just a little right-hand turn violation, it's okay. Well, if that little right-hand turn violation hits me when I'm on my bicycle, I'm going to be really pissed. I'm not going to be happy. And it's come close many times. I just, it's, it just irritates me that people have no respect for the law.
My question is, do you feel that the red light cameras have increased safety? Or do they just take pictures and issue tickets of people who violate the law?
Honestly, I think the red light cameras have increased safety. And, and I'm going to tell you why, because, because of, because I live in Loma Linda, I'm aware of the red light cameras. When I'm in other cities, I'm looking for them, because I don't want to get nailed in somebody else's city. There's not going to be anybody else politicking for me to not get a ticket in their city. It just makes you more aware of what's going on.
I've got one other question.
Yes?
If the legislature extended the death penalty to right turns, would you be in favor of enforcing them? See, it's, it's, it basically comes down to what price should they pay? And I think we all agree, I think all of us up here agree, four hundred and fifty-six is a bit steep for a right turn. And, you know, is it forty bucks? You know, if it was forty bucks, I probably wouldn't be complaining about it. You know, it's like a, it's like a parking ticket. The problem is, it's too high a price, and it's, and it drains money from our economy. And I'm, I'm not sure that the statistics, at least when it comes to auto accidents, I'm not sure the statistics bear any, you know, it, it doesn't show that there's a decrease in accidents. I don't know about pedestrian accidents, because that didn't, we've never been shown that. But, but to me, if we're going to, if we're going to fine our citizens and our, and our visitors twelve or thirteen million dollars over four years, we should at least expect some kind of a safety benefit from that. And I just don't see it. I appreciate the concern about safety, because that's, we all share that.
You know, I, I don't disagree that maybe the fine is outrageous in price, but at our level, we can't do anything about that. Are, you know, what message are we sending to our young drivers in this community? That our forefathers are telling us, hey, it's okay to turn right and smack into somebody? I mean, it just seems counterproductive. I just, it's just really bad. And you speak about the yellow light being extended. What effect did that have on the other colors? Does anybody know that?
Shorten the green, right?
Well, gee, how smart was that? You robbed Peter to pay Paul? Why would you shorten the green time?
They can still go the same amount of time, they just have more time to get through the yellow without, without.
So you're, so you're encouraging them to go on the yellow?
Without incurring a four hundred and fifty-six dollar fine.
If you take away the green, you're telling them, hey, we give you more yellow. Be bad on the other end.
But that, see, that, that would be.
We've taken away the good side.
That would be a great argument, if the data bore it out. But the data from other states are showing that elongation of the yellow lights has a sustained effect in reducing the violations, so people don't start gaming it. You know, Cassie Macduff wrote an article this week about, you know, maybe people will start gaming it, and then they'll, and then they'll learn bad habits, and they'll run red lights everywhere else, you know. It just doesn't happen, the, the statistics don't bear that out. It's, it's a sustained improvement.
Are, are you going to sit there and say that you are not a better driver because of the red light cameras in other cities, because you're not looking out for them?
I never run red lights to begin with.
I don't either.
I've come to a full and complete stop.
It raises your level of awareness. It really does.
I don't do this for me. It raises my hackles, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a lot of people complaining, but they're breaking the law. And what else do we do? Me not have to go that far, but you know, we got to be, it's ridiculous. Sorry. What else did I have here? All right, that's enough. Have a good evening.
Thanks for your input, Councilman Peterson.
Quick comment to Kirk, um, two, two points. Number one, I can tell you, I am a much safer driver than I was before they went in. I know that for myself.
And you said that months ago, and I commend you for that.
I'm a much, and number two, you're not alone. I have had a number of people at the university, employees, who have come to me and begged me not to take those cameras out, because they feel so much safer now that they're in. That, and so you're not alone in your opinions on that, I can tell you that. A lot of people have begged me not to take them out.
The, the hospital between, where the Ronald McDonald is there, where they have those blinking yellow lights, should we not take those out too, then?
Of course, your comment on what are we teaching our.
If it charged me four hundred and fifty-six dollars every time I drove over while it was blinking, yes, I would get it.
Would they charge you if you ran over that yellow line in the pedestrian area when it was blinking yellow? If an officer saw that?
If we signed a five-year contract.
No, I'm not talking about red light camera. If one of our officers was in the area and saw that violation, would that be something that we would write up?
But your com, sorry, you're going to go ahead and ask.
I don't have the correct answer for you on that. Would we, would we not? It's probably discretion of the officer, like in anything else, when it comes to these violations and traffic.
Keep water off, Dusty.
My, my chance to, to just respond briefly. Again, every one of these tickets that are issued are under the discretion of the sheriff. As we mentioned, December, sixty-four percent of the potential violations were dismissed. In January, sixty-five percent of them were dismissed, so they are under that. The point that you raised, though, that made me think just a little bit, my son has just turned sixteen, he is scheduled to start driver's education. Once in a while, he actually tunes in to see if Dad makes a fool of himself, which he does sometimes. But the point being, you know, what, what do we tell our teenage drivers? Yeah, you don't need to stop for red lights as long as you're sort of looking around everywhere. I haven't really thought too much about that, but you brought that one home tonight.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else from the public that wishes to comment on this item? Not that it's a formal public hearing, but we're just as soon limited to that at this point, and now we can have the fun of kicking it around amongst ourselves some more. Councilman Peterson?
Yeah, just one quick comment, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to correct. When you said that the Sheriff's Department dismissed the tickets, I, I think that's not quite correct. I think they decide whether, in fact, it is even a violation that rises to that point, so.
Potential violation, I believe, is the correct language. If I misspoke, I, I'm always glad to have things clarified. So, again, I think most everyone's weighed in, except for Councilman Popescu. Any comments that you'd like to, like to make at this time? You're welcome to.
Option number one, which was to terminate the contract early, was one that I wanted to make sure we place on and discuss and make a decision on. For those of you who perhaps haven't been paying attention, Dr. Ritzby and I wanted to remove the cameras early back in September, and we failed to do so because, I believe, you made the motion and I seconded it, and before we can actually vote on it, Mr. Peterson tabled the matter with Second Amendment to Ziprick, and ultimately the matter was tabled for later discussion. So we never had the votes. So therefore, we were in the minority, and the majority prevailed. So I want to make sure everybody's clear on that. I still believe that is a viable option for us to get out of the contract early, given what I believe is an injury to the community. One of the things that we wanted to do was look at options to try to limit the amount of expense that our community is borne out of this decision. And obviously, given the recent information about the subsequent meetings between the Sheriff's Department and Red Flex and city staff, it's clear that everybody's in agreement that we all must be sensitive to community needs and concerns. And I'm now very optimistic that, since the sheriff is going to use more discretion as they proceed with these red light violations, and we're seeing a little bit of data indicating that, that we will see a significant decrease in tickets. And I think it's still a little early. I would like to wait a month and look at the data to see how much discretion is being utilized, and then at that time, decide whether it's worthwhile to further pursue early termination. It may be that it's not in the best financial interest of the city to do so, because the amount of tickets are not that great. So at this time, I'm not sure if it requires a motion to continue, but I will just, you know, make a formal announcement, I will be bringing this back up again for possible early termination on the March ninth meeting, which is a month from now, so. And I think that's it. I mean, I'm not sure that I have anything else to add to it, other than I have received a number of complaints and emails from individuals after subsequent articles in the paper, and we've been mentioned on a number of other news stations. And there was one particular incident, in fact, the gentleman wanted to make sure that I brought this up, and of all people who brought it to my attention, it was my daughter, and it was last night, and she said that she attends the, the Drayson Center, there's a program there for kids, and she said that she talked to someone there who had been notified that this individual was coming to workout at the Drayson Center, and one time they received two tickets. They have canceled the membership, and they're no longer come to Loma Linda to go work out there. And that's just one incident, there's many. Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Ziprick, and in fact, all of us, received a very lengthy email from a very upset individual who received a ticket on his way to Mass at the VA for a right-hand turn violation, and this individual was livid, absolutely upset. He wrote letters to Jerry Lewis, and he wrote a letter to a lot of other individuals. And I think that, you know, they, they teach you in business that for one complaint, that's about ten individuals who are very upset. And to give you a perspective, I know Mr. Wiley says that it's hard for us to tell how, how does the public truly feel, you know, is, are we using anecdotal evidence? Well, there's enough data out there that when these items came for a vote, it passed seventy to thirty. So that should give you a little bit of reflection on how the public feels about these red light violations. There's a lot of discussion about whether certain violations merit the cost, people have to follow the law, but there's a lot of issues here, and I don't want to go into a lot of them. A lot of people feel there's some privacy concerns, there's some legal issues about the way the contract was structured, there's some issues about the companies involved. So in light of the right-hand turns, there's all other multiple issues that are involved that make these red light cameras a serious concern for our community. And once again, I want to just reemphasize that I'm very optimistic, and I'm very thankful to the Sheriff's Department for listening to our concerns. I know we had a very lengthy discussion at the last meeting about whether we had the, the right or the ability to do so, but it's very clear to me that we work as a, as a group here, and we need to work hand-in-hand with our law enforcement, law enforcement agencies to make sure that our community is policed properly, but also is very sensitive to our community concerns, and I really appreciate what they've done for us so far. Thank you.
As city attorney mentioned, if there is no further action that is taken, obviously the contract is in place, and it will terminate in approximately ten months. And if we choose to take other action at any point in time, as Councilman Popescu mentioned, he plans to look at some more data and then bring this. mentioned, he plans to look at some more data and then bring this back, and certainly then that is an option at any point in time. Only other brief comments I have on this item. I do agree that I'm bothered by condoning, breaking the law of not stopping at red lights. However, I do agree that the fines are, in my mind, way beyond what I think they should be, but I do think behavior has been changed, and I believe there is probably some safety benefits. Again, as I've mentioned before, the Cochrane review of all the data that they've been able to sift through suggests that the combination of red light cameras and yellow light extension have reduced serious traffic hazards in their analysis by about 92%. Is the risk benefit ratio, and so many things in life worth it? I think, again, consensus that there's not a consensus to extend this contract. I think that's very clear, but at this point in time, I am not convinced that we should go against staff's recommendation to terminate early, so I agree with all the comments and consensus on that. So unless there's any other action or comments, we'll leave it at that. Councilman Peterson.
Yeah, there's one other comment, and that is the issue on lengthening the yellow light, and that appears to have a significant effect. And, you know, I give Councilman Rigby, I think you're the first one that really brought that whole issue up and really pushed on it hard. Here's what bothers me, is that we have a whole profession out there called traffic engineers, and these people, we pay these people a lot of money to figure out what's the best way to set up the lights, and where are these people? If, why haven't they ever suggested lengthening the yellow light? Where does this all come from? Aren't these people weighing in on this? What's the deal? They're not being paid off by the camera people, certainly.
No, no, no. The problem is, like Kurt mentioned before, if you're lengthening the yellow light, that's meaning you reduce the green light. And then, so I will get a phone call from somebody that, hey, I waited for so long in the red light. It's... The whole idea of traffic engineer is to move the traffic, and that's why allow more green light to be able to move.
But certainly, a piece of their job is to maximize public safety too, isn't it?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So, I mean, you know, and I don't see these suggestions coming out of the traffic engineer people.
Well, part of it is that traffic safety engineers, when they engineer a standard, they tend to use a statistical approach. For example, on setting speed limits, they set the speed limit at the 85th percentile of the natural flow of traffic. So they're essentially saying, 15% of the people with that speed limit deserve a $350 ticket for going over the speed limit. So that's 15%. And I imagine they've done the same thing with these yellow light durations, because, you know, they say three seconds for a left turn, they say, you know, 3.7 seconds for such a speed, 4.0 seconds for another speed, and they probably do some kind of a statistical, you know, spread there. I don't know where the cutoff is, but that's how they decide these things.
Well, I just came back from an extended trip into the Western Pacific, and we spent a week and a little over a week on Guam and a little over a week on Palau. And the first thing I discovered on both of those islands was that the green light lasted at least twice as long as our green lights here, and the red light lasted about twice as long. Now, it annoyed me to begin with, because that's not what I'm used to here. But you know what I discovered? I discovered every time that light turned green, I got through without waiting through a second red light. And suddenly I realized, that worked pretty good. I didn't... It took about two days, and I didn't mind sitting there waiting, because I knew when that light turned, no matter how far back I was gonna get, I was gonna get through on the next one. And I... It worked really, it worked really good.
What island was this?
It was on Guam and on Palau.
Well, we can talk to them and get some ideas.
Mind you, that was quite the traffic we've got here, but there was, it was...
Mr. Mayor.
I don't think we've got it all together here.
There was an article in the Los Angeles Times several days ago that went into this issue, and one of the points it made was that the fine that went back several years had gone from around 250 to around 450. I think it was 260 to 450. And one of the points that I think has happened is that, and I know the sheriff might have a comment on this, I know just working on the court and some, I've seen a lot of fees getting added on, and there's a fee for everything now that's being tacked on. So the basic fine isn't so much the whole issue, it's all the other fees, yes. And what's happening is, we could certainly, as a city, probably register our displeasure with that, but I think it's a statewide issue that's being imposed everywhere. And as California is running into financial trouble, probably we're gonna see more and more of that, because it's an easier way for the powers that be in Sacramento to cover some deficits. So, and I think that that's probably the way it's gonna be for a while. In fact, I don't expect to see it in how our lifetimes change if the right things are going there. So...
If there are no further comments, we will move on with the rest of the agenda and a new business. Seeing or hearing no new business brings us to reports of councilmen. I have a couple of quick items, I guess, if no other reports of councilmen. Couldn't help but notice, I think this was today's Wall Street Journal, maybe yesterday's, I've forgotten, but clipped it out, and, you know, talking about First Lady and their causes over the years, and it just always glares when you read such things, and, you know, talking about Lady Bird Johnson, and her activism spurred a movement to clean up highways, remove billboards, et cetera. We still are plagued with billboards that are, violate all the spirit of her efforts. We're erected, now we can, I think, safely say illegally, that's found its way through the courts. We've discussed this item at this council and many other surrounding ones, but again, just plead those that have those in those jurisdictions, please figure out a way to eventually remove them. I know you can't do it overnight, but it's just distasteful and a real insult to all of the residents of this part of the inland empire. Second quick item, we've talked about in council and working with our city clerk, gonna send a letter to LA Ontario Airport Commissioners and ask them to please address the secondhand smoke problems at Ontario. There isn't a day that any of us that fly out of there or pick someone up. I have never had the experience of going to that airport without breathing in secondhand smoke. There are always individuals smoking at the entrance doors of the terminals. It's illegal even under current state law, but it's, again, just seems to be a total lack of recognition of a problem. So again, I've drafted a letter asking if possible to follow our example, make the airport smoke-free. If that's not feasible, at least forbid smoking in front of the terminals and designate a smoking area downwind of the prevailing wind, such as at the east end of the terminals that would minimize secondhand exposure and remove the smoke receptacles from the entrances and promote smoke cessation programs for your employees. If any of you have a chance to, you know, drop an email or whatever to LA Airport Commissioners, I'd sure love to see us tackle this issue. It just is irritating as well as a potential health issue. Councilman Peterson.
Yes, I can't help but, just two really quick comments again about the trip I just made. Number one, the Friday that I was there in Palau, Palau is a country, an independent country, the total population of the country is exactly the same as the city of Loma Linda. The population of the country, same as Loma Linda. They just raised the tax on a pack of cigarettes from a dollar a pack to $3 a pack, the Friday that I got there. And it's one of the highest of any of the US states. It's not a US state, but I mean, they compared it to the US state. The second thing is, if we think we have problems here, 22,000 people, they have the same as us, they have 200 square miles of land and 1.5 million square miles of territorial waters to patrol with a population of 22,000 people. So, other people have challenges too.
Reports of officers. We have a little bit of activity on economic outlook, and we'll also mention as a teaser for our next meeting, there will be a much more extensive discussion on our mid-year budget review and reports from the Budget Committee that we'll be meeting between now and then, but this is one piece of that economic puzzle that we continue to deal with and would like Economic Development Director to provide his report here.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and you hit it right, the economic puzzle. So we keep getting all kinds of economic news, good, bad, sideways. I really wanted to take a second and update you on what the climate is, not necessarily what's going on, what the projects are, but an overview of the climate and kind of how we're adapting and laying the groundwork to take advantage of that. So, we're all aware that unemployment is rising, even though it's rising a little slower than it went the last few months. We are affected by that here in Loma Linda. We're seeing some of that as part of our economic development here in the city, looking for some office development, retail development. You can see up there in the top left, the blue ones, you know, that's buildings that were sold, the red ones were the ones that were for sale. We're kind of upside down right now, that there's a lot of properties that are for sale. Nobody's really terribly interested in buying those, moving into them, or occupying them. On the right, we're kind of looking at a little bit into the future, that there's a lot of commercial properties that were mortgaged, were bought, were sold, where some of that debt is coming to fruition here in the next three, four, or five years. So, we're gonna start, the projections are that this commercial retail element is not gonna change dramatically as far as more property becoming available, because the owners are really not able to service their debt very well. Oh, my arrow kind of jumped out of the way there. So there's a look at the office market, kind of a cycle. You go from a recovery to expansion, all the way to recession. We unfortunately fall into that Los Angeles market and how Riverside, San Bernardino, Moreno Valley, inland empire area would be a major metropolitan area anywhere else in the country except bumped up next to Los Angeles. So we really don't have good numbers for ourselves, but we are up on the right there, and definitely in the middle section of the recession phase on the office market cycle. Kind of put the numbers on the top there for us, we're looking at about 11 and 1/2% vacancy, and a little over four years of glut on the market in those properties. One of the things to look at is that's what we're seeing, who's gonna build more retail commercial space here in the area.
Vacancy rates are a lot lower than what we're gonna pull up with in some...
It's better than some. I mean, you'd much rather be here than in Austin. So we are, by looking at that tail end of that, the tail end of the recession phase, you know, we are kind of bumping out and starting to set up for recovery. Same thing on retail market cycle, we're in that recessionary phase, almost 5% vacancy in the retail section. A little better news, they're looking at about one, little over one year of inventory in that environment. Apartment market cycle, we're actually digging out of that in this area. So that phase of the building, that phase of the activity is starting to recover, and Southern California is leading the way nationally in that little bit. So, vacancy rates there are actually pretty good, and there isn't too much of a glut relative to other cities. Industrial, which doesn't really affect us much, it does drive jobs though and the economy in the area, so we're starting to lead a recovery there as well. With the same thing, about two years of glut in the industrial piece. Lodging, if the demand there is in pink, there's some projections for some rapid recovery in that lodging segment. I know we have a hotel that we've been trying to get built, and we're lacking the financing on that, and that's part of the reason why. If you look over to the right, those are hotel properties that were started or sold in the last three years. It went down from almost 900 down to about 91, so about 10% of what it was a couple of years ago. San Bernardino County leads the nation in the number of hotel properties that are in foreclosure or have actually been repossessed. Housing is a little brighter for us, actually. California is starting with the apartment piece, the residential piece is starting to dig out. Unfortunately, the inland counties in central California is lagging, you know, we kind of let the dip into the housing world, and we're the last ones out. There's actually some price increases up in, over last year, along the coastal counties. And you can kind of see the graph on where we've been over the last six years. San Bernardino County is that ugly orange one down on the bottom right, that's finally starting to peak up a little bit. So, what happened here? Where population grew, we've, housing prices have dropped. We saw that on that graph by almost 35%. It's more expensive to live in Loma Linda than anywhere else, that's just a function of being in California. And we have a relatively high unemployment, and we've lost about 6% of our jobs here in town. So, not a terribly rosy outlook, but we're actually positioned in a fairly good place. We've got a lot of interest from developers, and right now it's more interest and activity, and specifically looking for intersections that are signalized, the places that we have traffic signals with vacant property. Kind of the whole city is surrounded by a lot of those intersections that are showing interest and gonna be in demand the next couple of years. So we also have some places with real high traffic counts. Another thing, those signalized intersections, developers are looking especially for a retail environment, to have those traffic counts to draw customers in. And we have a very well-paid workforce that kind of went on monster.com and a couple of listings and pulled just what they were offering for jobs for some of these jobs here in town between the VA and the medical center. So, that's a big positive for our community. So what are we doing? We're, like I said, we're working with developers, we're meeting with, you know, trying to lay that groundwork, build those relationships. Jarvan and the representatives from Redevelopment Agency have really worked to make the permitting process along with community development, to streamline that, to make it more flexible. And then, you know, we're kind of reaching outside the city as much as we can to start building relationships on a regional basis to bring some of that investment in. And, so what are we doing? You know, streamlining the permits, the big ones we need to do, and I think we're, you as a council and as a redevelopment agency, yeah, I misspelled financial. Did I misspell that to you? So much for my spell check. Thanks, Brian. Anyway, the things we're doing and the things we need to be doing now is where we're at, is we're building out infrastructure, we're making sure the roads are paved, we're making sure that, you know, the Mountain View Bridge was expanded, that we... sure that, you know, the Mountain View Bridge was expanded, that we've done those things to bring that infrastructure, make the city attractive for new development, and it's kind of those things as things dip, you get your house back in order, which we've been fairly successful in doing, and looking out on that horizon, looking at some of those graphs coming up. And that's about it. Thank you.
I just wanted to add a couple more comments. Many of the things that Conrad enlightened us about is some of the things that Dusty and I have learned. We attended a couple of conferences, he and I attended one, and then I attended another one with Conrad down in San Diego. And one of the things that we discovered is we made some valuable contacts, and I think these contacts are going to pay off in the future. I think one of the other things that we found out going to the conference was we met with some landowners, some national and international retailers, and we also met with small and large developers, and they all saw the potential of Loma Linda, and I think that we're probably going to see some results as a result of the conversations we've had. One of the things that Dusty and I were surprised to find out was there were a few developers that were purposely or unpurposely misled into believing that Measure V was limiting what they could do, and we had to educate them about the rules of Measure V and what they can do, and they were very, very happy to hear that they actually can work within Measure V and follow through with that. So, that was very nice for us to be able to do that. A lot of these developers, we couldn't have met with them. I know some people made comments about they come to us, no, they don't come to us. There's, we're competing with thousands of cities across the country of locations. They tend to all come at a conference, and you're very, very fortunate to have meetings. And we've had some meetings with some very important people, and we're very, very thankful for the fact that they took the time to meet with us. And subsequently, I was able to gather some data about the potential that we have in Loma Linda, given the medical center, the VA, and the university, and the numbers are astounding as far as the buying power of all these individuals who come in. They make quite a bit of money, and also we have a great, a large group number, a large number of patients and also family members, and they all come in, so there's huge potential in Loma Linda for restaurants and other retail outlets in light of the economic gloom. Of course, a lot of that is, there's about three factors that play into that. One is the landowner, he has to agree to it, if he doesn't, nothing gets built. Obviously, you've got to find the right developer, you know, a lot of them promise the world, but only few of them are really good. And also, they have to have the financing, obviously, if they can't find the financing, they can't build. But we're able to learn a great deal and weed out the ones that we believe are really all talk and no action, and finding out that some of them are serious and they do have the financial backing. I'm getting more and more, some of the contacts we've made allowed us to talk to other developers that we never would have met, and we're in the process of having further conversations about potential for all sorts of interesting housing in Loma Linda, not just commercial. So, there is the potential out there, but that just requires a lot of work and due diligence on our part. I think that pretty much summarizes everything that I wanted to address regarding economic development. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to mention one thing that was a good development in the last couple of weeks. There's a gentleman by the name of David Money Harris, and he's been in contact with city staff. He's the author of A Foot in the Field in the Inland Empire, and he has been exploring the South Hills Preserve, and several of us had an opportunity to hike with him to the highest point in our city recently, on a weekend, and he said he was pretty impressed with our South Hills Preserve. He said, and he's hiked, you know, all over the world, but he felt that for a small city in this part of the country, we have a pretty good hiking system. So, we can expect with his next edition of the book to see our preserve as a new chapter, and he's going to have an online version with his next update. So, those who are interested in the South Hills will be happy to see that come out.
Any other reports of officers? Councilman Peterson, you're not an officer, but speak up.
Yeah, I comment on the officers, one comment about our infrastructure, again, is I drive around this town, and I look at the streets. Compared to any other town around here, I mean, we're looking really good. I mean, those streets look wonderful compared to anything I see anyplace else around here. I'm really proud of the way our streets look in terms of maintenance and repair, it's great.
And it's not just that, think of the infrastructure with the recent storms and so forth, been a lot of work, and, you know, storms have passed with barely a blip, as far as that goes.
We're in great shape.
Thank you. Seeing no other reports of officers, city council meeting is adjourned.
Okay, that brings us to the Redevelopment Agency agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Are there any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Seeing none. We have the minutes of January twenty-sixth.
Move them. Second discussion.
Any opposition? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.